Excited about today. We had a wonderful convocation today. Wonderful convocation today. It's almost as though we all gave ourselves marching orders as to why and to how we need to make sure that every day that we do things for to make sure that every scholar is ready for life. And that's certainly going to be my mantra. I think I'm going to put it on my board at my own nonprofit to remind all parents, actually, who come into our facility, that that is our mission, is building stronger schools together to have every scholar, every day, ready for life. So with that, I would like to introduce Mrs. Chanello Evans, who will introduce our student who will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Evans.
Thank you. To Dr. Gray, Madam President, Board Members, including our newest Board Member and all JPS supporters, it is certainly an honor and definitely a privilege to introduce Ms. Colin Robinson, the daughter of Mr. Charlie Robinson. Colin is an eighth grade scholar at Peoples Middle School and Academic Resort, which is under the scholastic direction of Dr. Carrie Gray. Ms. Robinson is a member of the Peoples Hornet Band and Choir. She ranks academically among the highest in her class. Colin plans to begin her post-secondary education at Heinz Community College, where she plans to develop her vocal gifts and study business management. Please welcome the future Chief Executive Officer of Robinson Enterprises, Ms. Colin Robinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, if you will just stay for a second. Do we have a token of appreciation for her? Our colleague, Mr. Hobbs, will present you a certificate.
Thank you so much, Ms. Robinson. We appreciate you on behalf of Superintendent Gray, Board of Trustees, and we look forward to great things to come from you in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do we have anyone from Ms. Robinson's family here? Dad? Would you stand again, Dad? Could we ask Ms. Colin's dad to please stand? Let us appreciate him. Oh, he's standing. All right. And how about JPS family? Principal Ms. Evans is here.
Dr. Carrie Gray, Principal of Peoples.
Thank you. We'll now have the prayer of invocation that will be introduced by our colleague, Mr. Jones.
Reverend Boyd. Reverend Boyd is a native of Jackson, Mississippi, and he was educated in Jackson Public Schools where he attended Brinkley High School. Reverend Boyd made great strides to, as he embarked upon high goals in his life through education and the ministry. He is a recipient of many honors and numerous awards, just to name a few. Reverend Boyd has received a Bachelor of Theological Degree from Bonner Campbell College in Edwards, Mississippi, a Bachelor of Social Work Degree from Delta State University in Cleveland, Mississippi, a Master's of Theology and a Doctor of Philosophy Degrees in Christian Counseling from International Seminary in Plymouth, Florida, a Doctor of Ministry and Master of Divinity Degrees from Andersonville Theological Seminary in Camilla, Georgia. In 2012, Reverend Boyd was named Pastor of the Year under the Jack, for the Jackson Gospel Music Awards. Also in 2012, he was named Hometown Hero from the Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau. In 2010, he received the Strength Award from Dress for Success Metro Jackson Outstanding Young Men of America. In 1997, Reverend Boyd received the Golden Hammer Award for, from the Mayor of New Orleans, Louisiana, for his efforts in revitalizing delighted properties in his church community. Associated with that honor, Reverend Boyd served as Chairman of the Central Business District Empowerment Zone in New Orleans and became a member of the Mayor's Advisory Board. Reverend Boyd is the beloved pastor of Pearl Street AME Church in West Jackson. He is married to Ms. Gloria G. Boyd, and together they have four adult children and seven grandchildren. May I present to you my good friend, Reverend Samuel H. Boyd.
Let us pray. God of grace and God of glory on thy people, pour thy power. Before heels and order stood, the earth received her frame from everlasting to everlasting thou art God, to endless years same. We come, Father, thanking you for this opportunity to invoke your throne. We thank you for these who have been chosen and appointed to serve in the capacities, Board Members of Jackson Public School. We pray for those who are here, and Lord, that they will do not just work as usual, but ministry as they deal with the issues that impact our youth as they gather together this week and next week for classes and for the year. We pray now your blessing upon them in protection and safety in the school campus, in the hallways, and back and forth. Give them safe harbors, we pray, in Jesus' exalted name. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Boyd, if you wait for a second, our colleague would like to give you a certificate for participating today. You've been doing double duty today anyway, right?
Yes.
Reverend Boyd. On behalf of Superintendent Central Gray, Board, School Board, we thank you for all that you do in the community, all that you'll continue to do, and just keep being that bright light and shining armor in the city of Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Boyd. Is anyone with you today? Thank you very much. We're now down to the establishment of a quorum. We're pleased to say that we have a full cadre of individuals here constitute our quorum. And again, welcome to our newest member, Ms. Campbell. We are now proceeding to adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second. I'm sorry, Madam President, Board of Trustees, please forgive me for this. There is a, we'd like to, once we arrive at the approval of staff personnel matters, there will be one item I'd like to remove, and that item would be C-19. And so when we arrive there, as we began to approve those items, we'd like to remove C-19.
And the personnel?
Out of personnel, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The agenda itself is complete, just that one item in that particular.
All right.
Package.
Do we have a second? Comments, those in favor? Thank you. We're now down to review of discipline cases.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, we have none. Thank you, Dr. Knox.
Thank you. Reading and approving minutes of July 12th, the regular meeting, and the July 26th, regular meeting.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, this line item, July 12th and July 26th, regular meeting minutes.
Motion for adoption. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the minutes of July 12th, 2016, and July 26th, 2016. Comments, those in favor? Thank you. We're now down to public participation for general comments.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, we have none listed for public comments.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, it is indeed a pleasure to open the school year alongside you. We appreciate all those who gather here today. The vision of Jackson Public Schools is to have, I'm smiling because that's what we've been doing all morning long, to have high achieving schools for high achieving scholars in a sa, let me say that again, that needs to be changed. All right, so let's make sure we get that right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, please, if you don't mind. The vision of Jackson Public Schools is to have high achieving schools that serve high achieving scholars in a clean and safe environment. The wildly important goals of Jackson Public Schools is, are, number one, to increase academic achievement, number two, to increase the average daily attendance for scholars and staff, and number three, to attract and retain high quality staff. Our mission, we are building stronger schools together to have every scholar, every day, ready for life. Online registration, online registration continues throughout the district. Parents or guardians and caregivers must make an initial visit to the school in their attendance zone to begin the online registration process. Parents can find out their scholar's school attendance zone by contacting the JPS Office of Enrollment Services at 601-960-8852. Completing online registration requires access to a computer with a connection to the Internet. Computer labs are set up at each school for parents who do not have access to a computer. Schools will be open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., and schools will be closed for lunch from 11:30 to 12:30 p.m. Hours will be extended each Thursday until 6:00 p.m. to accommodate our late working parents. Strive for less than five. School attendance is very important to ensure students do not miss vital classroom instructional time. When students improve their attendance rates, they improve their academic prospects. We're asking everyone to strive for less than five absences during the entire school year. Parents, please help us meet our attendance goals by making sure that our scholars or children are absent no more than five days during the school year. Active Parent. All parents and legal guardians are encouraged to sign up for Active Parent. This tool is a web-based application that allows parents to keep track of their scholar's attendance, behavior, and course performance more than just once a quarter. A plus, JPS parents with more than one student can access records from all, for all of them with one account. You can also keep up with the latest school news, student schedules, and grades. Please create an account or log in by visiting the parent page on the JPS website, jackson.k12.ms.us. The first day of school, first day of school for our scholars is August the 9th, 2016, that is next Tuesday. Free breakfast and lunch. JPS schools, JPS students will receive, again, free breakfast and lunch meals for 2016, 2017. JPS is taking part in the Community Eligibility Program. The CEP, as it's known, allows schools that serve low-income children to offer free nutritious school meals to all students through the National School Lunch and School Breakfast Programs. Superintendent's Hotline. The Superintendent's Hotline will be in operation again this year to answer any questions or concerns on the first two days of school, August 9th and 10th. Hotline operators will answer calls from 7:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. Call 601-960-2781 to get help with everything from registration to transportation. JPS calling all fathers to participate in the Million Father March. As a part of the nationwide Million Father March, Jackson Public Schools is calling all fathers, male relatives, and caregivers to escort their children to class on the first day of school, August 9th, 2016. This event, which is part of our watchdogs, D O G S, Dads of Great Students Program, aims to inspire all fathers and father figures and families to be more engaged with their children's education. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the announcements. One real quick report update on wildly important goals. We are approximately 70% registered. 70% of our parents have gotten the online code, which is a few percentage points above last year, so we're grateful for that, and we're on track for, the last number I looked at, Jason, I think it was slight, 28,000 something, somewhere around, 28,300. So we're on track for registration. Local schools are doing an excellent job of making sure that their messages are out. Several schools have gone to the community centers in their schools zone to make sure our parents are comfortable as they register their children and our scholars, so we're grateful for that. That concludes Superintendent's reports and announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. We're here for, we're now down to information items only.
All right, Madam President and Board of Trustees, Ms. Shepherd's going to take this item.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Ms. Burt, other members of the Board, you have before you policies that are for information only. This is another part of our speedy review of the policies. There are several, and they range from emergency drills to school searches to reporting of violent acts. They will be placed in the schools and on our website for review and brought back to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd. Yes, Dad?
All right, just a quick question. Thanks, Madam President. I noticed that the procedures for JCBAA for anti-bullying was both on, for review and for a vote later. Is that being removed from one or the other?
No, that's inadvertent, because if you will recall, the Board does not actually vote on the procedures. They're just always contained in the policies for informational purposes so that you will see what the procedures are. But the Board don't have, does not vote on procedures. It's an administrative regulation.
Okay, more specifically, it looked like the same thing, but one of them had updates and whatnot, and the other one didn't, so I wasn't sure which one was the actual procedures, regardless of that.
Yes, the one that is on the Board's agenda item for approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So we're now down to information action items, for which we have none. We'll continue to consent agenda items finance.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, we'll ask our Chief Financial Officer, Sharon Miller, to lead us through the consent agenda items finance. They are under consent agenda, and so taking them collectively is your prerogative. We generally do, if there are any, this is summertime, we don't have many donations over the summer, but, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Bur, Dr. Burton, Dr. Gray.
Hey, I like the promotion.
Thank you, Dr. Gray, Ms. Burt, members of the Board. I present to you two items under consent agenda items finance. A, the approval of an audit contract between Bruno and Tavellion LLP CPAs and the Jackson Public School District for the audit ended fiscal year June 30, 2016, and item B, approval of disbursements and accounts payable claims for July 2nd through July 15, 2016.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items under finance A and B. Questions, comments? Ms. Jones, you have it.
Yeah, one question.
Mr. Jones.
Yes, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
As relation to the contract with Bruno. I saw in there that there were a lot of language about their role in terms of, you know, adhering to, you know, generally accepting account practice principles and all that.
Yes, sir.
How, how did you feel about their reputation with IRS and the Department of Revenue?
I, I was very pleased. We did some research, because this is a new firm to us, but they, their references were excellent, and, you know, it's important for us to make sure that they are timely and they are accurate, and so that's why this year I'm presenting it for a one-year contract so that we can evaluate them. And then make further recommendations, but I was very satisfied with the references and also the work that they've performed in the past for school districts.
Bruno and Tavellon, just based on my own knowledge, has a, just an absolutely terrific record of doing audits, not only here in Mississippi, but I, their home base, I think, was in New Orleans.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and they are one of the minority firms.
Yes, ma'am.
That have done just outstanding work in the past year, so I was happy to see that we were able to bring on new.
Yes.
Persons or new companies that, in which we can kind of share.
Yes.
What we're doing around, so thank you.
The excellent, the other opportunity we have is that our former lead auditor with Watkins is with this firm now, and he lead, he's going to lead our audit as well. Very outstanding auditor who, who is our champion when it comes to the State Audit Department.
Yes, thank you. Motion? Okay, those in favor? In unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now continue to consent agenda items general.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, you have under consent agenda items general, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and as is our practice, we can take them collectively or separate the ones you want more information on.
Colleagues, Mr. Jones.
I have one about D.
D, okay. Mr. Oppenheim?
I echo item D, and then I also had questions about item G, I, K, and L.
K and L, okay.
And I have a question on E.
On E. So I entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda items, A, B, C, F, H, J.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt agenda items, consent agenda items, A, B, C, F, H, I.
No question.
I'm sorry.
J.
I'm sorry, J.
Right.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a quick question just about item H, if it's all right, Madam President, for the hearing officers. How often did we use the hearing officers last year? And then the second part, that is, there, is there a way, since this is something that we do yearly, that we assess their performance or their quality, et cetera, et cetera?
Madam President, Board of Trustees, Mr. Oppenheim will ask Dr. Knox to come up and address that question.
For the 2015, 2016 school year, we used hearing officers 36 times. They are evaluated, the quality of their work. I have the responsibility for listening to the proceedings at times, and I have the responsibility for reviewing all of the documentation that are, that the hearing officers produce from the hearings.
If I may, are there like certain standards that they have to follow, or is it, they're really just facilitating the conversation, you know, between the hearing, I'm sorry, between the administrative procedure folks and the student and family?
We have a script for the hearing officers to proceed with.
But there's not standards that they have to go by?
There's a script that they have to proceed with.
Can you talk a little bit about the script, please?
Well, the script, I designed to, they lay out proceedings of the hearing, and then I've designed it so that we keep it on the issue. It doesn't get off into personal situations or personality or things that are extraneous to the particular infraction before the hearing. So that, this is what they are evaluated on. They don't give their personal opinion, that's part of the script. They don't allow the administrators to give their personal opinion, they don't allow comments that are not pertinent to the infraction that is brought against the child.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I was curious if there's like a state standard that they have to follow in these procedures?
They, they, Ms. Oppenheim, have to follow the due process rights to protect those of children, and with that script that Dr. Knox is talking about, the district expects them, and they have been very well versed in the minimum requirements of due process. They're always ensuring that there's notice and that there's an opportunity for the children to be heard.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Knox, particularly for your service, and great, Madam President. As you have had a chance to review the hearings or observe the hearings and report on them, is there anything that you have noted that perhaps we need to take a closer look at or, you know, through the recommendation of Superintendent Gray, to assist, you know, in terms, or anything popping up a little bit more, you know, in terms of disciplinary hearings that perhaps may be changing, or what can we do better?
Well, one of the things that I'm going to ask the hearing officers to do this year that I haven't asked before is to give their perspective on the, on the proceedings. In the past, they've given the committees perspective. This year, I'm going to get the committee's perspective as well as the hearing officer's perspective on the proceedings.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. So now we'll go back to D.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, the Graduation Alliance Dropout Recovery Pilot Program, Dr. Murray is available for questions.
Dr. Murray, will you just give a brief synopsis of what this is, although the information was provided?
Yes, Dr. Gray, Ms. Burt, Board Members. About two years ago, we were approached by a group, a Graduation Alliance, and over the last two years, we've brought several different groups of people to the table to kind of take a look at this program. In nutshell, what it is, is we have students who've dropped out, who are no longer in our district. They're dropped out, or they are no-shows, we can't find them, basically. And so what this company does, they come in, and they go out, and they find those students. Currently, we're not receiving any funding from the state because these students are no longer on our roll. Once they locate these students, they attempt to re-engage the students. We will serve as the gatekeeper, meaning we will have a staff person who will make the determination as to whether we accept these students back or not. So that, that's our part. This company will provide computers for every student. They will provide the locations for the instructional process to take place. They have a mentor, and so basically what happens is that the attempt is to get these students graduated, and we will receive the credit for these graduates, and we will be reimbursed by the state for recovering these students. Once we are reimbursed, then they will receive $500 per month, per student, from the reimbursement that we receive from the state. So that, that's what makes it cost neutral.
Okay.
So basically, that's, that's, it's a, it's a recovery process, and the goal is to increase, of course, our graduation rate and decrease our dropout rate.
And, and that adds, I assume, also to our total enrollment?
Yes.
Because they get counted as our students at the end of the year, and it's really not costing us.
No.
As a matter of fact, we are, we are getting reimbursed from the state, and from that, that's where they get their money for finding the students that we would not have had in the first place.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Who had their hands up? Mr.? Ms. Sam's?
Yes.
Mr. Jones and Mr. Oppenheim?
Thank you, Dr. Murray, Dr. Ms. Burt. How many students?
Okay.
So basically, that's, that's, it's a, it's a recovery process. And the goal is to increase, of course, our graduation rate and decrease our dropout rate.
And, and that adds, I assume, also to our total enrollment?
Yes.
Because they get counted as our students at the end of the year. And it's really not costing us. As a matter of fact, we are, we are getting reimbursed from the state. And from that, that's where they get their money for finding the students that we would not have had in the first place. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Who had their hands up? Mr. Ms. Samms?
Yes.
Mr. Jones and Mr. Oppenheim.
Thank you, Dr. Murray, Dr. Ms. Burtt. How many students do we think we have a reach for at this point?
They've been doing this work across the nation, and they, and just, I'd like to add a note. They approached MDE with this concept, and MDE has approved three districts in the state to do this. That's Jackson Public, Vicksburg, and Biloxi. Those are the only three districts that they will allow to participate in this pilot. The numbers, we had a, kind of a startup meeting a few weeks ago, and the company told, their target is about 16,000, they think we have about 16,000 students out there that could be recovered in some way or another. Of that 16,000, realistically, from the data across the nation, they anticipate finding about 1,200 of those students. And of that 1,200, re-engaging and graduating about 70% of that, of that 1,200.
And that's 1,200 within JPS's?
Yes. 1,200, 1,200 of our students that are, that are out there now, that are not in school, that are school age and that are not actively in school.
What is it, what is the age, age range that?
It would go until, you know, school age, until 21. They would be eligible up until they, they age out at 21. And so if you do the numbers, if you look at our graduation rate, and you think about 66%, 1,400, 30, 33% of that, that's about 400 students every year that are out there. And if you do the math over a period of years, that, those numbers add up. We have that many students out there that can be re-engaged. And so they, we don't, all we have to do is accept the students. They do all the, the legwork. And it helps us to clean up, clean up our debt. And there was a question asked, if those students want to come back into the schools and we can find a place for them, then they have no problem with that. They will allow us to re-enroll those students or put them in our REAP program or whatever.
Mr. Jones.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Murray.
Yes, sir.
For what you do. The question I have is, how does this opportunity leverage our current dropout restructuring plan?
Well, it's, it's directly aligned, you know, with, with our plan. Our goal is to, is to re-engage our students. That, that helps our community, and ultimately, it helps the numbers, but it helps our community. Because these students that are not in school, that are not engaged in any kind of, in anything, are the ones that are out there wavering in the community. So it's directly aligned to the, the work that we're doing. Dr. Lockett has been at the table, special programs, counselors, everyone has been at the table. This has been a collective effort to, to take a look at this program. And it, it, it works. It directly aligns with the work that we're doing in the district.
Okay. I noticed in some of the, the scope of their offerings, in terms of creative recovery, working toward a transition to, either to, to, to college or career readiness and so on, how does that align with our current professionals that are providing these similar services?
Well, what they will do, they will follow the same state law graduation requirements that we follow. So those students that they re-engage, there is no shortcut. The only process, the only thing that will happen is many of these students, for whatever reason, they are not, they're no longer engaged. They're no longer with us, for a lot of reasons. They were. This program, a student could log on at 10 o'clock at night and work from 10 to 12. We don't have that option. So they will tailor the student's program, but they will still have to meet the graduation requirements, whether it's, you know, general diploma, college track, they still have to meet the requirements. And we will, we will issue the diploma, not the, not the organization. So we will have to say, we have a lead counselor who will work with them and say, well, this student qualifies, this student is a graduate. So we'll be involved in all of that. Again, we will, we determine who goes into the program. They can't go out into the community, get a student and put them in. We have to say, yes, we, we want this program, this student back into the program.
Okay. So our curriculum will, oh, yes, we, based on your all's assessment and review, has already been aligned to, to really, okay?
They will be aligned to MDE standards.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Mr. Oppenheim.
Thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Dr. Murray, for bringing this to us. This is exciting. I, I like that we're doing this. I do have a couple of questions, and I think you touched on a couple of them, so I'm sorry if I'm repeating them. I was a little bit confused about, I think you touched this, who's staffing this? They're sending in people from wherever they're located?
No, no.
Or they're hiring locally?
They actually hire locally. And they've, they've reached out to us to actually take recommendations. If we have individuals that are in our community that we would like to, to recommend to them, they, they're hiring locally, though.
Okay. And then it mentioned that the staff-student ratio is 75 to 1. Is, that sounds like a, a very high ratio, especially for this particular population. Is that something that is some kind of a standard?
Well, it's a little different. The, the model that they use, again, it's, it's, if you've, if you're familiar with virtual school or online, every student has their own personal device. They have their own computer loaded with the curriculum, and they have coaches. So they'll schedule. If I have 75 students and Mr. Murray is my teacher, then at different intervals, I work individually with that student. They have relationships with the library, with different places they've rented. So they will meet those students. There's a coach, there's a mentor. They have different levels of support for those students. Because the students, they can't bill us for a student that's not making adequate progress. That's, that's important. So if, they can't just sign a student up and get paid for them. That student has to make a certain amount of progress each month to even qualify to be reimbursed.
Well, so I, so I guess my question would be too, given that this is a population that's either been pushed out of school or dropped out, I would imagine that their needs are really great, right?
Yes.
Their literacy, literacy skills, whether it's computer literacy, numeracy, et cetera, et cetera. I, who's responsible for those kind of remediations for these kids?
There is a, they have, every student has an individualized team. There's a, a team of individuals that works with each student to make sure that they, they reach their targets.
Located here?
Located here, yes. Locally. Yes, sir.
And then I, just a couple of, and thank you for that. So I was trying to clear that up in my head. The, will they be, and this might be a question also for Dr. Gray, will they be in collaboration with other pieces going on? I, I know you mentioned, you know, they could re-enter, maybe be in the REAP program, whatnot, but what about the workaround alignment, the workaround, the various other organizations and entities that are?
Yes, sir. It's, it's a partnership, whatever. Again, we, we, we drive the bus in this. We determine their level. If, again, with students, we, we determine the track that the student's going. If, if we take a look at it, our lead counselor, attendance folks, if we take a look at it and decide that this student needs to go to REAP, or this student needs to go to Alliance, or this student needs to re-enroll at Mura, then we, we make that determination. And then if we send the students to them, then that's when they sign those students up. But if we, you know, if we would like them to participate in the alignment process, I'm directly involved with the alignment process and with this group. So we can make that happen if that, if that's something that, that we need to make happen.
Thank you for that explanation. And then just, I think this is my last question, and I apologize. Because it was a little bit confusing on the question about sped records, special education records. I was a little bit confused that we're delegating responsibility to Graduation Alliance regarding their special education records?
No.
Can you kind of clear that? It was point P dot 2 dot A, that something about us delegating, and it sounded like, if I was to read it, right, that a parent or whomever would have to talk to Graduation Alliance to get their exceptional education records. Was that correct?
I would have to look closer there. But Mr. Dr. Miller would be involved in every phase. He's a part of the startup team. So he would have to be involved. And again, of course, we would have to work out if there were details that, that are out of compliance, and of course, they would have to bring those things into compliance. But Dr. Miller would be involved in every phase of this startup.
Yeah, no, I, and I'll just refer to, it's just the provision of special education. The district may delegate the following responsibilities to Graduation Alliance. And the first one is request of student's special education's records. And I would just, one of my concerns would be that we're delegating that responsibility to an outside entity.
We wouldn't do that.
Thank you, Dr. Murray.
Hey, one question. What are your anticipated outcomes for transitioning these, these, these students to a workforce readiness, readiness program? And then with that, how has the relationship been with MDE and their workforce, you know, transitional person being, as it relates to them approving, you know, this, this company to, to come and provide these level of services?
Well, again, they, they would fall into line with, with currently, the work, I work with academies, is directly in line with workforce development. This would just be an effort to reach a population of students that we're not touching at all now. But it would directly align with the work that we're already doing through alignment. We have a great partnership with MDE. They're working with us. We are getting all kinds of workforce development training through our CTE programs and through our alignment. So this would just be, just addressing another population of students. But it would, the relationship would continue to be good with MDE and the supports that they provide for us.
Thank you.
Uh, yes. Dr. Mann.
Yeah, just to add it to, I had one question. You mentioned that they could, the, the student itself will be like an online, they're, do an online program. And then you mentioned that they, you or we will be assigning them to a class, whether it's at Mura or any other school. Is that, what, is that, I understand that?
There are different options. The question was, if they, if the students, if they re, if they come back and they decide that I don't want to go to Graduation Alliance. These are students that are not, we've not talked with, we don't know where they are. They find them, and we say, well, the student decides I want to come back to Mura, then they can enroll at Mura. Or they can go into our REAP program, or they can opt to do the Graduation Alliance, which is the program that they handle. These students, we don't provide any services for that. The company would do, would work with that student.
Okay.
So those are the options.
Great, great.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, just for our clarification, we feel like this connects directly to our wildly important goals, achieving, achieving and, and performance and average daily attendance, obviously. We also feel, though, that this was the missing link. It's the one place we haven't been able to touch because we don't have necessarily the resources to go out and find these young people. We have discovered, though, with the use of our current attendance counselors and current things in place, like the REAP program, that they are out there. And some of them, though, are a little bit more difficult to reach, obviously. When you are estranged from school, for whatever reason, you really need the welcome mat to be put out. And so we feel like Graduation Alliance is that welcome mat. Once, once they have been located, then we bring them back in and, and offer them several options, one of which, of course, would be Graduation Alliance. Their, their record is pretty clear, and it's worked well in other spaces. And so we're really confident that Jackson could benefit from it.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. And, and thank you, Dr. Murray. You know, I think that this is an example, one example, of the way that we have to start thinking in terms of trying to retrieve what's ours and to make sure that we serve every young person who lives within the Jackson Public School District. So I'm excited about this. I, I, I want to certainly hear and see the results of it at the end of the year so we can make some determination as to whether it was a good decision.
Yes, sir.
It certainly has the implication to be a wonderful one. And the other part of it is that we hope to, and I hope you will, engage the parents of these students. So we get parents coming back and talking to, and, and getting back engaged into the system because they might have other children. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And so we're bringing in a whole community of folks talking about re-engaging in Jackson Public Schools. So I think it's very innovative, and I'm happy that we were one of the ones that were, that were able, that's able to do it. And as all trustees want to know the effects of it, we'll be happy to look at that.
Yes.
During the course of the year. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda item D.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda item D. Those in favor? Thank you. Now proceed to E.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, the approval between Jackson Public Schools MSO and J, uh, PPSJ, I'm sorry. Dr. Davidson's available for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Gray, Ms. Burtt, members of the board. I'll entertain any questions regarding this item.
Okay. Who pulled E?
Ms. Samms.
I did pull E. Um, there was, um, I'm understanding that there are teachers that are going to be doing the orchestra and so forth, and there's four payments. However, and I'm not sure if we're ending payments June 30th, because that's the end of our fiscal year, because are there any teachings going on after school is closed?
No, there is not any strings instruction occurring during that time. However, we do have four, oh, we do have the payment scheduled in increments of four, four payments to the, to the Symphony Orchestra.
Right, right, right. But the contract does not complete until the end of June.
Yes.
And so I'm wondering, are there activities after May 15th, which is their last payment date?
There are not specific strings instruction activities. However, I do have to be in meetings and conversations with the Executive Director and Director of Education in planning for the following school year.
So, Madam President, Board of Trustees, the, the actual activities conclude with the school year.
Wow.
There are, though, the, our contractual agreement ends at, at the end of the fiscal year. And then between the end of the school year and the end of the fiscal year, Dr. Davidson, MSO, meet to plan for the next year. Our desire is to get this item in front of the board prior, each year prior to school beginning. Two years back, three years back, I think, we really struggled with getting them up and running at the beginning of the year. So our new approach over the last couple of years has to begin, to begin the process before this, that year, that school year ends, so that we don't have to, you know, sort of push too hard in terms of, be pushed too hard in terms of scheduling. So, but, but the natural agreement would end with the end of the school year and fiscal year for us.
And are students able to choose when they do their elective assessments?
Yes.
In, in the spring?
Yes.
So you already know who your students are going to be for the most part?
Yes, ma'am. We know approximately how many students and who those students will be during January and February of each school year.
Okay. And how many students do we have?
Last year, the strings served 510 students.
Okay.
In 19 schools.
Good.
Any other questions? Motion for approval? Been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda item E. Those in favor? Thank you. Um, Jean?
Madam President, Board of Trustees, the McKinney, McKinley Vento Homeless Education and Youth Program. This is a federal application to support the approximately 15.
4,052.
Oh, my gosh. Say that again?
4,052 homeless students in the district.
Okay. By the federal definition of homeless, you'll understand. So.
Right.
Thank you, Dr. Gray, Ms. Burtt. On behalf of Dr. Webly, I present to you, for your approval of the fiscal year 17 McKinley Vento Education for Homeless Children and Youth Program grant.
Would you give us the definition of homeless so that, I mean, that's a lot of young people, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're all out in the cold? Can you give us that?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the definition of homeless is children who are actually have, are living in cars, they're living in transitional houses. They also may be doubled up, living with a grandparent or an aunt or an uncle. And then there are some who are actually homeless. So there are various categories of homelessness.
And does that include some of our, our students who might be in group homes?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, those kinds of facilities as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion for adoption. Then we'll get questions. It's been moved in second that we adopt agenda item, where are we? Jean?
Questions?
Mr. Oppenheim.
Thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Ms. Miller, for bringing this forward. Do we have to report our outcomes on a yearly basis in order to get new dollars and reapply?
Yes, sir. You, there, those children are also going to be counted in, in the, in regular count that we do for our students. So yes, they are identified as such, and so that Dr. Webly and her staff can pull them out, so they will know specifically how those children have done. And I believe in- And I believe in the documents, some of that information is there. Um, but yes, they are counted, they are, and, and I don't think there is a maximum, uh, that they have to do certain growth and that type of thing, but they are tracked to ensure that they are counted and they are receiving the services that they need just like we would any other student in the district.
Uh, and one of my questions was whether that data, I couldn't tell if that data was for the district as a whole or for those students in particular, because I think in the narrative piece it talked about they weren't doing as, quite as good as their peers, which I could imagine because of the struggle around resources, you know, whatnot. So, yeah. Um, is twenty thousand dollars the maximum we could ask for under this particular grant?
It is at this point. Um, if you recall, the, the state divvies up this grant and, um, gives you an initial allocation. Then they take the applications and there are a number of school districts who will not apply for this, who will not take this money. And so what the State Department does at that point is they come back and they say, now we have this, these available dollars, who else needs more? And then we go back. Uh, over the last several years, we've gotten upwards of around forty, fifty thousand dollars for this. But this initial twenty thousand is what, um, we can apply for at this point.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, it's crazy that we have a thousand more students or considered homeless this year than last year, which is a tragedy in all kinds of different ways. Um, one of my questions, general questions, I guess, resource wise and what the district is doing, kind of based on some of that data, is what is in the plan that's different than was last year? Given that, and that might not be up your alley, Ms. Miller, but, um, given that it's still a constant struggle.
Certainly. So, uh, and, uh, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Mr. Oppenheimer, you will forgive us. Dr. Webly had an emergency. Uh, you know, she is, uh, quite, uh, able to speak for us and for, uh, this particular, um, item. Uh, and she is constantly reviewing what we can do a little better. Uh, and part of it, and I don't have the details in front of me, so, but part of it is how we use the other resources we have to support this group. And so we also allocate funds to support, um, this, uh, and provide resources while these students are in the shelters, et cetera, uh, like computers, et cetera, those kinds of things. So we do a little extra where we can. Uh, and the other, the, um, the Family Resource Center, the, the Parent Center over at Enix, uh, is also aptly equipped. And there's an open house that's held every year, uh, for them as well. So I, I, we, we want to, as much as we can, invite parents to come out so that we can provide these resources. The challenges we keep meeting, uh, is that it's not, um, I mean, it's, it's difficult when you, um, when you have to identify as homeless. So we may not get as many as, as we'd like, uh, to come for the resources. So we do, we, once we've identified that they are in our, uh, space, then we provide, uh, as much as we can to, to assist them.
Have we ever done anything like identify a lot of the motels and whatnot that, uh, our kids are moving from spot to spot?
Yes. Motels and one of the.
Yeah, I know personally that, um, you know, there's a family, I know that's, that's, uh, you know, living in a, in a space that's, uh, you know, temporary. Uh, so, yes, sir. We, we do it. I think that, and I just, you know, you, I'm sorry, this is, uh, it's, it's a little difficult to handle because, uh, you know, you know, you have, if you have some connection with, with a few of our families and you understand, all of you all have that, so you see where I'm coming from. But what we're working on is, uh, sort of removing some of the stigmatism that, that, that comes with that. Uh, and that's really the, the, the biggest lift, is trying to see that it's not, um, uh, it's not a handout. It's, it's just a help until you get to a space where you're going to, you know, do things on your own.
And then kind of, and thank you for that, and I appreciate how complicated this issue is, given it's also a lot of the young folks who I've been working with for years. But the, um, do we, and this might be secondary to this and might not even be applicable under this, but do we track the kids who are moving from apartment to apartment throughout the year and having to transfer schools? Is there something that we track? Because I know that affects our student population in kind of funny ways.
Well, actually, those students will have to transfer and then those documents, those records are moved from school to school. So we will know where those children go. So if you transfer from a school in the south because your parent moved from south to north, those documents have to follow you. So yes, they are tracked.
But, and at no point that has anything to do with this particular, the McKinley Vento.
Well, we, unless, we treat the, these children just as we would anyone else. So if they were in a shelter, for example, and then they attained housing and moved to a different school zone, then whoever was handling that, those, those documents would follow, just like every, every other student.
Yeah. And I wonder if, kind of secondary to this, it's, um, because I know I ask every, when I'm going in and during the school visits, I'll ask the principals, like, how many of your students have come and left, you know, during the school year, that, to get a real handle on that? Because that's a population that has a huge effect on.
We, uh, Mr. President, Madam President.
She's been sitting there for you.
Oh, my goodness, I just, uh, I just lost.
That's okay.
Your question again, Ms. Oppenheimer, I was, I had a response for you. Oh, 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 our transient rate, our transient rate creeps between twenty-five and thirty percent. Uh, the last time, um, that I checked, and I think, uh, Jason is nodding, it's somewhere in that area and that. So that's a lot of movement, which is important, I'm glad you mentioned that. It's important to understand that every, the research is clear and Dr. Margaret Wallace is nodding. Every time a child moves from one place to another, they've lost a minimum of three weeks of instruction, as much as six weeks, because the transition itself, I mean, is very, very difficult. And, and, uh, I know for personal reasons, because this job moves me around a lot. And, I mean, it, it takes a while to shift. Uh, so, uh, we have, we're working very hard to identify the scholars in that way. That's why we're grateful that you allow us, uh, to screen them at the beginning of the school year. And we regularly check with them academically throughout the year, uh, to see how much, uh, uh, learning has been lost. But you're, you know, we're looking at ups, upwards of, uh, you know, twenty-five, thirty percent of our scholars that'll move, uh, at least once in one school year.
Right. Ms. Miller, um, do you know if J P S is eligible for, um, say, the Stewart McKinney Act dollars that the city has under C D B G?
I'm, I'm familiar with that, but not as much as it applies to the school district, but I'll certainly find out.
Would you ask maybe Dr. Webly to look us, under, that, that whole act is for homelessness? And so I don't know if we would qualify, but it would be worth looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Oppenheimer, were you about to say something?
I mean, I was going to say, you know, I, I, I ask so many questions about this particular issue because I think it's something that at the service level, we live, obviously, in a very high poverty community, but this particular issue, I think, is both subtle and under the surface and is always there.
Absolutely.
And so I think it's important that, especially as much as we're doing to get the community involved around, um, the issue around homelessness, because people think homelessness is sleeping out on the street and it's moving from motels, it's moving from antiques to the couch to whatever.
Right. Okay. Uh, those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now down to I.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, an agreement between Jackson Public Schools and Eric Stringfellow. I'll introduce this one and, uh, and do my best to take questions as well. Um, uh, we have a tremendous amount of great things that are going on in our, uh, community, in our city. Uh, we, uh, do, we got everything from web page to Twitter to, um, anything that you could name, we have it. And we yet still, uh, struggle at no fault of our own, um, with getting the good word out and having that word be not only, uh, comprehensive but informative. Uh, and I feel like we need a deeper reach. I think we need a concentrated P R campaign for Jackson Public Schools, and that is a grassroots effort. It's not something a commercial will resolve. Uh, and so I wanted to engage with, uh, I checked with more than one, but the one that, one name that kept coming up was this one. And I wanted to engage with someone who has, um, a further reach, uh, than we're able to do at this point. Uh, it includes, um, uh, friends and family at the state legislature, uh, and at the supervisor's office, um, city council, uh, universities. Uh, and then it's a deeper reach even into, uh, homeowner associations, uh, and the like. Uh, we have to have, I think, a strategic approach to this. And just like, uh, with Graduation Alliance, capturing dropouts, uh, has been something that, you know, we have not been able to do until now. You've, uh, helped us reach that. Uh, and I'd like for some assistance in, uh, in an intensive P R campaign that would take place between now, uh, and probably somewhere in, uh, December to help us get our message out in a meaningful way, smaller groups, uh, one-on-ones with some people that, um, we haven't, uh, been able to engage with before. And the reason I feel like, uh, we need a little help with this is staff is already pulling it from hither to yon. Uh, they did an outstanding job of transitioning, a complication to here, for example, getting it set up, getting the, uh, meeting moving, et cetera. Uh, if you have noticed and you have seen teacher recruitment videos and a constant presence, uh, on the internet uh, and on our I T V, uh, and we're excited about all of that. I just think that we really need to push a little harder, especially in the times that we're in right now. Uh, we are battling, uh, some foes that, um, have more resources than we do. Uh, they have deeper connections than we do. And, but, but at the same time, they're also, I think, willing to have the conversation. So we need that strategic approach, uh, to this, and that's why we're asking to advance this item.
Okay, let's get it on the floor. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Second, it's been moved in second that we adopt Consent Agenda Item.
I.
I. I'll entertain questions. Uh, Dr. Lynn and Mr. Oppenheimer.
Yes, uh, once again, I want to, I want to commend Dr. Gray for, uh, stepping forward and, and trying to improve our communication because, you, you know, I've, I've always said that, uh, if we don't communicate, I mean, we've got a lot of things going great in our district, but who knows about it outside of this room and, and those of us who are, who are working hard and, and all of you all trying to make it happen. But how is it that we are not getting that information to the community? So it is, it's a great opportunity, um, for us to be able to have somebody. If, if, if we're not able to do it ourselves, then maybe somebody that can possibly, uh, get that message out for us. Uh, mind you, that we realize that you all are educators and, uh, but there are some professionals out there that do their job well that can come in and help get our message out. So I applaud you for that. I do want to ask you, uh, a couple of questions, so, one being, how is it that, um, we are going to pay for it? That's number one. Uh, will there be an itemized, um, cost, uh, associated with that? So that we'll know that what he did per month, because I'm assuming we'd have to pay him something every month. If that's the case, we'll need to know what is it that he did and, and what was the results?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so that we can do an assessment at the end of the term and see if that's something that maybe we need to continue or, uh, maybe see if, if, if it's not working, maybe start someplace else.
Yes, sir.
Down the road, however, I would like to see us have somebody come in to, if we don't have anybody on board, then train them.
Yes, sir.
You know, I would rather look at taking the money that, that we're going to spend on the outside and have them come in and teach up, somebody in our organization so that long term, we can keep it going in-house.
Yes, sir.
So if we can look at that, I, I would appreciate that.
Uh, yes, sir. And Madam President, uh, board members, Dr. Lynn. Uh, so the, the first, uh, question about pay, uh, last year you allowed us, uh, to allocate a position called the Umbudsman. Uh, and that was slated for about fifty-one, fifty-two thousand dollars a year as a staff person who would be the communication between the superintendent and parents that may have had, uh, concerns or issues. And so, uh, we did not employ that position. Uh, we want to take a fifth of that and, uh, do this. So that's where that would come from. Um, it will, the, the, uh, the work will be itemized, just like the attorney, uh, like, uh, our, your, your board attorney does on a monthly basis, is three columns, uh, the date, the project, and the, the, the amount per hour. I mean, the, uh, the cum, the cumulative amount per hour. So, uh, when they, if they spend two hours developing the message and then two more hours on the phone connecting with, uh, Presidential Hills, Woodley, Woodhaven, Homeowners Association, uh, Valley North, whomever, uh, then, then they itemize all of that in one, one sheet. Uh, this, it goes to, the attorney comes to me, uh, and then we process it that way. So that, that answers your question in that way. The last one is a very good question. Um, so, um, so, so part of this is, yes, of course, uh, we expect great results. Part of it is, we won't know until a couple of months down the road. So I don't want to hire someone full-time for this kind of work until October, November comes and you see the fruit of our labor. Then we can consider something a little longer term. So we have, though, the benefit of our staff members being former media folk, public media people. Uh, many of them are from L B T and, uh, J T V. Uh, I know, uh, Sherwin Johnson, our executive director, is from L B T. So he has a great relationship there. He's a good T V person, obviously, he's doing a great job. Uh, and so, um, what will enhance the work though is when, um, as Mr. Stringfellow comes on, he's, he has also worked with Jackson State University, helped developing their, uh, public relations pla, program. So they will work in conjunction with one another, iron, sharpening iron, uh, and they'll get information from one another. I'm just not ready yet to employ another person in that department.
Yeah, and that's, that's something that I agree with as well. Um, you know, I'm, I'm looking long-term. It was, we've, we've got to find a way to, to get our message out.
Yes, sir.
In a way that the community and, and the public can understand it.
Yes, sir.
And, um, we've, we've got a lot of great things going on, but, you know, a lot of folks don't really understand it. They've heard about it, but they don't really understand it.
Right.
And to have somebody on our team that, that knows how to communicate that, uh, I can tell you, I think that, that's going to be something that will, will work for us.
Yes, sir. And Madam President, Board of Trustees, uh, Dr. Lynn, you know better than I do, being, uh, from these parts longer than I have, uh, that this is the, this biggest small city, uh, in, in, in the nation.
That's right.
Uh, and that people will watch the news, sure, some of them will glance at the paper, but the real impact happens when you sit down at the, uh, Neighborhood Association meeting, uh, when you gather at the community center, uh, and when you go strategically to places. Uh, we've had the greatest impact where we're one-on-one, one-to-two, one-to, one-to-ten. And, and, uh, and I know that, uh, Mr. Stringfellow has these connections throughout. And, and not just on our side of the aisle, if I may, uh, say respectfully, uh, not just our folk, but everyone. And because, uh, I also know that, um, even though, um, some may not always agree with us, they are open and willing to a meeting of the minds, which means they'll have more information, especially on the hill, Ms. Campbell. They'll have more information, so when they're making this decision, it's not based upon just what they've heard on their side. And so at some point, we'll have an opportunity to sit at the table and at least, uh, share our side of the story.
And one, one last question, if, if, if it's possible for maybe the board to get together and meet with him?
Absolutely.
And, uh, and maybe share some ideas on, on how they think that, that he can do that.
Mr. Oppenheimer?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Gray. And, and I, I can appreciate, uh, can, can appreciate, um, you know, where this is coming from and why we're doing it. I do have, obviously, as I often do around issues around media, questions, um, especially given that we have a whole department, um, that's been in existence for some years, that is really supposed to be doing this particular job. And so I really want to be convinced that this is something that they should not be doing, so to speak, um, with the resources that we're already putting into them.
Right. Excellent question, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Mr. Oppenheimer, excellent question. Um, the, the easiest way for me to put that, the simplest way I should say for me to put that is, we are a, a, a school district and we do school, uh, and not the other things. The other things we add because it's part of school. But I really think that we are at this juncture needing a deeper dive in an area that we have not been able to penetrate. Uh, and so our staff is, uh, they do a yeoman's job, uh, um, uh, they have award-winning staff, as a matter of fact, for the work we do, uh, from, so to speak, nine to five. as a matter of fact, for the work we do, uh, from, so to speak, nine to five. But some of this work is going to be, uh, beyond the scope of just work hours. And, uh, it's going to have to also depend a great deal on the relationship that we have with people because, you know, as, as, as fun as it may sound, I could call, I could pick up a phone, and I've done this, I've done this personally, pick up the phone and call some of our major companies in the city and say, "My name is Cedric Gray, I just want to sit down with you, you know, with your second-in-command and just introduce myself and, and I don't get on their schedule." Because they don't know me. They just know what they've seen and heard, et cetera. But if someone knows that person, then you, you know, then it, then there's a stronger and quicker connection. And I know that, uh, with Mr. Stringfellow's background in this community, that he can get that done. So that's the part that, that our current staff, uh, because of our own limitations, uh, haven't been able to do.
And, and I would still say with that, and I know we do schools and we do education, but we have a transportation department, we have a, uh, campus enforcement department, we have a PR office, you know, and so I'm, I'm still not sure, I, I, I obviously haven't been convinced about, about the need for this. And, and, um, and I think your point is really important, right, that a lot of it is getting down to the, to the dinner table, right? With a lot of our families, with a lot of our, um, kids and their families and whatnot. And so I, I just kind of, uh, and I think about it from pounding the pavement and grassroots versus grass tops, right? And I think this looks like a grass tops where we're trying to make sure, and I think it's really important, obviously, that we need to, um, uh, we need to convince the legislature, we need to make those arguments to the legislature. But we also, obviously, and we, and I think we all know this, is convince our families and our, and our kids to be engaged and stay engaged. And I, and I just, I'm not sure with everything else, with a department that already essentially does this intern, internally and whatnot, that, at least in my opinion, that this is the best use of our resource. And this is nothing against Mr. Stringfellow, I don't know him very well, but the, um, but that, that's kind of my concerns with this particular.
Thank you. Mr. Hobbs?
Dr. Gray, you know, I tell you all the time that we need to tell our story.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, right now, I'm very excited about this agreement. Um, Mr. Stringfellow, I mean, he, he's got a superb track record, I'm very familiar with him, and I think right now he's the best person to articulate our message and get, you know, get us back out there. And with this decision and what you're bringing this to us, I think we're on our way, you know, to put that message out there and, you know, take away the bad stuff.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Ms. Sims?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions. Uh, do we have one, two, five projects that we immediately want to bring them to work on? And, um, will we be aware of them prior to the media, uh, we give emails when things happen? And I do appreciate that, but, um, we would definitely want to review.
Sure.
Some of the things prior to it, um, getting to the public.
Yes, ma'am. And part of it reflects on the memo I gave, uh, the board, uh, I think, two meetings ago. Uh, and then the other part is going to be as we move forward, um, Mr. Stringfellow will meet with you. Uh, there has been a desire among all members to have your own meeting in your own ward.
Yes.
And he can get that done for us, uh, and, and organize it in such a way. Mr. Stringfellow helped, uh, the district, uh, a few years back when there was a redistricting, rezoning situation going on. So, um, we feel like, uh, whatever, what we've outlined in that memo before, uh, and, um, based upon your desire to have those meetings in your wards, that this can, uh, this will, this, this will move the agenda forward for that. Yes, ma'am.
Board members, you recall at our last meeting, I think I mentioned that, um, it would be important that we are as transparent as we can be about this MDE report and that what we can do after August fifteenth and after we've gotten, uh, an answer from them, regardless, uh, that we can each collectively take that document to our, our individual wards and go through it and talk about it so that people will understand exactly what they said, what we said, what the results will be. And then the fact that we really need the community to help, to help do this. And I think that the community will rise to the occasion if we ask them. So I'm excited about that aspect and because that also lets the community know who we are as board members and the fact that we are supportive of this community and the students who live in it. I would suggest to you, to all of us, that we're going to be a little tired because I would expect every board member to support the other person who might be conducting that board, that meeting in their ward. So that we will all be, we have to figure out, is that a meeting?
Yes. Well, no, that's not a meeting. Not a meeting.
So, uh, we have to figure out how we can all support each other as colleagues in our individual wards, uh, so that we can inform this entire, and once we've done seven, we've done the community.
That's right.
And I think we can only be stronger with that. So I'm excited about this prospect. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, if I can just make one final comment, and that is, you know, sometimes you, you have to do an investment, you have to invest. And if you are a business owner, you have to invest in your business. Um, and I see this as, as an investment, um, in our children because just as recently as this morning, uh, look what happened. Dr. Gray mentioned five students that are tops. Um, how many people, if, if they would not have came to where we were this morning, would have known that? And certainly the community don't know it, outside of their own families telling it. So we need to get that information out there. Somebody scoring a thirty-three and a thirty-two on the, on their ACT, that's, that's stuff that the community needs to hear.
Yes, sir.
So when they hear that we are a D district, they don't believe all that garbage because they start to see the good stuff that we have. And so we have to invest in, 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 uh, in this district. And sometimes I think, you know, it's, it's going to take a few dollars. And, but when you look at your long-term goal and your long-term achievement, it's worth every penny of it. So I would say, um, this is a great thing, great day. Thank you.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I'll ask for, uh, motion for approval. Do we have that already?
Help me out. Ms. Sims. Move.
Okay. Those in favor? Those opposed? Six, one, thank you. Okay. Our next is Kay.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration of the emergency management plan for Jackson Public Schools, Chief Jones, uh, is available for questions.
Who pulled Kay?
I, I did, because I didn't see the plan.
Me, me either.
The, the plan's not in here, that's why I pulled it.
So our first question is, uh, Mr. Jones, there was no attachment? There was no plan?
And let me apologize for that. We put it up and we don't know why it did not show up. And we're trying to figure that out as late as last night.
Okay. So can we then, uh, move this to the next, uh?
Yes, ma'am.
Agenda, to the next board meeting? Thank you. And I bet it was a great plan, but we really do need to see it.
Thank you, Board Members.
All right.
Madam President, uh, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, uh, revision of policies as listed, those were attached. Attorney Shepherd will take questions.
So, Attorney Shepherd?
Yes, ma'am.
These are policies that we need to, one, update, two, make sure that we are, that we have collectively carried all of our policies forward that impact our school in every way from top to bottom. Tell me when I'm wrong, okay?
Doing good.
So then, uh, there are policies that we are trying to adopt that, uh, we need to show that we've moved on related to this report, to this audit report that we have. And so, uh, with that, uh, you're asking us to adopt the policies.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Uh, Mr. Jones, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Hobbs.
With, with that being said, uh, I recommend Attorney Shepherd that we move with passing the items, because they are of importance, you know, for this MDE audit. We can take a look at the policies afterwards, and if we have any questions or concerns about it, we can get with you or, or discuss them in executive session on the next meeting.
That, that is correct. We will, uh, if the board has any questions about the policies, we'd like to see some of the policies changed after you thoroughly, uh, read them because it is, there are a lot of them. Uh, we can bring it back, uh, for revision and review.
Because one of the things that, um, that I noticed is that, you know, I got to be honest, that, um, there are lots of policies I really didn't know existed, frankly. I really didn't. And, um, and, you know, I try to read pretty often, but I, uh, didn't know that they existed. And I think that if I didn't know they existed, then some parents don't know they existed. So we can include that as a part of the work that we're doing as trustees in our various wards so that parents understand these, because if they understand them, then that helps in terms of their managing their children and, and in terms of their working with our school system. So I see this as a great opportunity. We do want to make sure that we try to adhere to MDEs, uh, to the concerns that we have facing us right now because we know that some of our issues are going to take a little longer than others. And, but it's, at the same time, I agree with Mr. Hobbs that we want to make sure that all those policies are policies that we agree to and that make sense to us as well. So I would, uh, I would encourage us as well, let's read them thoroughly. And if there are any, or all of them, that seem to make sense for us to bring back, let's do that at the next one. Uh, Mr. Oppenheimer?
Yeah, and thank you for that, and thanks for raising that, Mr. Hobbs. Um, I guess my question is, I never feel comfortable voting for anything and then saying, you know, we're going to, uh, come back and it's not a finished product. And I know we're all, I mean, and I say finished product very loosely because I know everything's always kind of, uh, in process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because there were quite a number of these that I think need a lot of work and, and I think that are really vital to, uh, our kids, our community, our schools, um, you know, particularly the anti-bullying policy, particularly the dropout prevention policy, uh, the truancy tardiness and whatnot. And I get that we want to get some of these through as soon as possible, um, but I'm a little bit concerned about voting on something now, uh, on some of these now, um, when they're not at a point that, uh, the community has had input, even if it is to go to, to MDE. And, and I think actually when these were brought up, I may have either asked the question beforehand, how many of these are directly related to the audit itself? And I think, and I don't remember the answer, but I think it was, that wasn't necessarily how these were chosen.
Mm-hmm.
So if that's not the case, and I would hope that we could get into a deeper dive into some of the, the policies that I think are super vital.
Yes, and just for clarification purposes, they are chosen for the audit as well as the Code of Conduct Handbook, which the district is trying to get out in the hands of students. As far as the specific bullying policy, that policy actually did not change except, uh, we did some capitalizations of, uh, the words such as district and student code of conduct. Now, the procedures did change, uh, and those are revised. And I believe I, uh, for, forwarded the revised, uh, copy to the board, um, this morning. And the procedures are not voted on by the board, they're entirely an administrative, uh, regulation. But the bullying policy, uh, did not change. And I know you, Mr. Oppenheimer, had, um, a question with regards to pattern and our, we really can't define it, um, because that's what the state statute says. It's a pattern or gestures of, uh, behavior that constitutes bullying. So we just kind of tracked the statutory language and, uh, would probably be remiss to try to define pattern any, any better than what the, the state, uh, has done. But, uh, at any rate, the policies that, uh, as we continued our dive into the audit, we, uh, did indicate that, um, some of the policies would be, um, approved with the, with the, um, consent of the board. And that's what we're hoping that would happen. And of course, certainly, as Ms. Burke said and Mr. Hobbs, if there are anything that once you would continue to read them and look at our feedback to your questions, uh, we can always come back and revise. Because it, it is going to be a, an ongoing process. It's actually the first time, um, that I can recall that we've actually all sat around the cabinet and the leadership team and actually looked, uh, collectively at all of the policies. And that's why it was, um, pretty unwieldy and massive.
And I, and I appreciate that, and I, and I thank you for that because I know it's not easy and I know that, and I know I'm not easy, I know I'm a pain in the butt most of the time. But the, um, uh, just given that, I know a number of people, you know, responded, well, I said, "Hey, there's public comment on these," that, that a number of people, you know, want to be involved in a much deeper conversation about these. And so I would hope that we could do that sooner and not pass this opportunity of... And, and then the other question around the dropout prevention plan policies, I, I understand the state had us doing every five years a plan and how this particular policy fits into that, or if that plan is even something that we still need to do, because I remember being a much longer cumbersome document.
It is, and we do still need to do that. That's the state statute that requires every district to have a dropout prevention plan.
So how does what we see in front of us link to that?
That is, that is the policy that requires the plan. And normally what will happen, uh, once we develop the actual plan, it is presented to the board because the board actually has to approve the dropout prevention plan. This is just a policy, uh, that says we will have the plan.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, what the administration is recommending is that you, um, pass what we have included in the packet, we'll put them right back out.
Okay.
So that they can stay for the...
The, the normal thirty days is what, uh, they normally stay for. We were on a short circuit.
I hear that, and that's probably why I came with a waterfall of questions. But the, um, but then just generally, all those ones that didn't know when they were revised and amended, I would hope that that can be included before we vote. So would that have to be a part of the motion?
No, that's cleanup. We do that routinely after every policy. Sometimes the date, sometimes the board will change the date of the board meeting, but they're already in the NOVA's agenda packet. So, uh, the dates at the bottom will all say August the fourth. Most of them, uh, have been cleaned up to say that, but they, they will, um, have that indication.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for approval with the caveat of sending them out in, uh, back into the community.
Some move.
It's been moved in second that we...
Can you clarify what we're, the, the vote was, so we're voting on, yeah, what's the motion?
The recommendation is to approve the policies and the district will then turn around and send them out for comments. Again, and if those comments are, uh, deemed worthy, then you will have an opportunity to revise them again.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items. Aye. Those in favor? Am I getting seven?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. All right, we're now down to the consent agenda items personnel, we're removing C-19.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, Board of Trustees, for your consideration, approval of staff personnel matters minus C-19.
Motion for approval?
Some move. Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items. Personnel, with the exception of C-19, questions? Mr. Oppenheimer?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a question on D-19, not the specific person, but just the, the job. Um, is this the job description, and this is, uh, around the day treatment center, is this the job description for the per, for, that we voted on, on July 12th? And if not, does this mean we're hiring one for the treatment center and one for everyone else?
This is the one, this is the one, um, that, that connects to last week.
So we're not having a separate, um, comply, I think it's a compliance position, uh... So we're not having a separate, um, comply, I think it's a compliance position, uh, for the whole exceptional education department, so that one position was just for the day treatment center?
Cheryl is going to clear it up for us.
Ms. Oppenheimer, yes, this is the one that, the job description that you approved was specifically for the day treatment, but we still then have the compliance coordinator for the exceptional ed department. So this one will, this person will work specifically and directly with just the day treatment center.
So there is two positions that we are hiring?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Mr. Jones?
This, this is a question in reference to the special ed department, not so much, uh, directly in regards to the personnel. Where, where are we, uh, as it relates to preparation for, um, the audit or review that's coming up?
Oh, okay, yes, sir, I can answer that one. Uh, so we're expecting Mississippi Department of Education, exceptional education department to visit us in November. Novem-
November sixth.
November the second through the fourth, and so we have re-engaged with Dr. Fisher and Mr. Brier, as you already know, aware of, and we're well on our way in making sure that, uh, that'll be successful. I'm glad you asked, because I, we, we want to keep that in front of us.
Thanks, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
All righty then. Those in favor? Thank you. Dr. Lee, I don't see you down there.
Oh, yeah, my hands, she didn't raise her hands, I'm out really.
Thank you, unanimous. We're now down to other business.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, really quickly, uh, just a follow-up from the last meeting. You asked for clarification on the date, time, and address of the accreditation meeting, so here is.
Wonderful.
Here is, uh, the letter.
So colleagues, if you can possibly come, we would love for everyone to come to this meeting on August the fifteenth, and that we all, August sixteenth, I guess, when is it?
It is the.
August been rescheduled for the sixteenth.
Sixteen.
Um, if you, if everyone can come to this meeting, it would be wonderful.
It is that Tuesday of the board meeting, next board meeting.
And if you would please, uh, prior to that time, let me know whether you're going to be able to come or not, it would be great for us to, if we could all sit together. All righty, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, additionally, we wanted to make sure that you are aware of, as we're opening schools, um, any of our buildings that may have any challenges that we're working to meet. Now, I don't know if you've had this experience, but I have, the air conditioning goes out in the summer, as much as we want and work hard to do, so, uh, at this point, though, we are grateful, it's like it's isolated to just two schools. Parts have been ordered, some of the parts may not arrive until actual school day, the school day begins. So I want to prepare our community like we do every year, and when you have sixty schools, you know, things like this.
What schools, Dr. Gray?
Uh, we're looking at for Con Park.
Okay.
And Hardy Middle.
Con Park and Hardy.
So if, uh, if there are schools in your ward, rest assured, you can contact me, call me, Mr. Walters and, and Mr. Davis, and the principals have already, we're sending out letters and, and all of that, so we're going to, I want to confirm it. But the rest of these are other things that we've been working on all summer, uh, but I just want to keep you apprised of that, because on the first day of school, traditionally what happened is, the most excitement is the first day for everybody.
Yes.
And so, uh, we're preparing our parents ahead of time, we've got a plan in place for all of these, I just, but I feel like we needed to let you know, uh, ahead of time, so you'll know, so we appreciate that. That's, that concludes my other business, ma'am. Oh, and, and just a, a, a very hearty thank you, uh, for coming out to our convocation, we're grateful for that.
Absolutely. Yes, um, Ms. Sims?
Um, first of all, I thank Dr. Gray and on the convocation, I applaud the new initiatives that we're going to be moving forward on, and think that they're very accomplished. Secondly, I'd like to ask, uh, Dr. Gray, with the schools a promise? Are we all staffed and ready to go?
We are, we are ready to go, uh, we are, uh, I'm hearing, getting a nod from their, uh, their chief academic officer, Jason Serge, who's also our chief of staff, uh, and, uh, he's nodding, so we're good, we're, now, we still have a few vacancies, I think, to fill. Yeah, we still have vacancies to fill, um, and we're working feverishly.
Are the schools a promise?
Yes, ma'am, mhm, even with the signing bonus, uh, there are still some, but we're working on that. We had a meeting Monday or Tuesday with Kelly Services, and they're working hard. Uh, everybody's, everybody's got their hand on the, on the plow, so we're pushing as hard as we can. But we're going, but we're going to open school Monday, I mean, Tuesday, and I'm going to be in all seven of them.
Okay.
And lastly, I'd like to just make an announcement, uh, Royal Blue Express and some community, um, contributors are giving away book bags on Sunday afternoon at Shepherd's, um, Park right across from Shepherd's Gym. Um, the Jim Hill Cheerleaders, uh, Pep Squad and Drum Corps are going to come. There's going to be a DJ and whatever, so there's school supplies for boys and girls, K five through twelve grade. So first time, first serve, but you do have to get that ticket, and they're all free.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful, thank you, Ms. Sims. Um, executive session?
No.
You would? Thank you, so I'll entertain a motion for dismissal. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great school year. I am just so excited about this school year, and I hope that you are and that you pass it on to your teachers and principals who pass it on to our entire system. So with that, I entertain a motion for dismissal.
So moved?
Moved in second, and we dismiss, those in favor?
Thank you.
Have a great year.